Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 23rd, 2025 City Daytona Beach Planning Board Meeting. We're happy we have you here with us this evening. Before I call the roll call, Madam Secretary, I did want to ask a question. Did you pass me last month?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson, particularly. He just answered my question. Okay, we will move forward with that shot over the bow, sir. Ms. Robinson, could we have the roll call, please?
Who?
Washington.
Washington, what did I say?
Robinson.
I'm thinking about this thought. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Washington, my mistake.
Mr. Barhu.
Present.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. Mr. Servance. Mr. Weatherhose.
Present.
Ms. Washington, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to item number three, approval of the minutes of the September 25th.
2025 Planning Board Meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Make a motion to approve minutes as written. Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Any citizens that wish to address the board concerning items on the agenda this evening, we ask you to fill out the green comment card right here, or form, depending how you want to look at that. When you come to lectern, please state your name and your address for the record. We do have a time limit of three minutes, but if you can make your point in less than three minutes, we certainly won't argue with that. So, moving forward, we could move to item 4A. Madam Secretary, if you would.
Item 4A, new items. The comments at LPGA Planned Development General PDG rezoning DEV 2024-584 quasi judicial hearing.
Very good. Hey Dana Lee, how are you?
Good evening, Dana Lee. Senior Planner. This item is a request to rezone approximately 10.16 acres of property from Single Family Residential 5 to Plan Development General to allow for development with office and retail uses. The property is located on the east side of LPGA Boulevard, north of Royal County Boulevard. There's some feedback in these mics, it's kind of distracting, so fix that, please. The future land use on the property is mixed use. The current zoning is SFR 5 and the proposed zoning is PDG. And this is the aerial which shows the existing vacant property. So, the property has a mixed use future land use, is currently vacant, and is situated along LPGA Boulevard adjacent to existing residential neighborhoods. The applicant is requesting a rezone to develop a mixed use commercial development with retail and office uses to support the surrounding residents. The proposed rezone is consistent with the mixed use future land use designation while limiting the potential non-residential uses and intensity of the development the future land use would allow. And no waivers or modifications to the Land Development Code are requested with this rezone. So, this map shows the area surrounding the subject property, which includes proposed future multifamily and commercial along LPGA Boulevard and the existing residential behind and across the street from the subject property. Further north are the institutional uses such as the stadium, a city's utilities facility, and a school. This is the proposed conceptual PD plan, which shows six buildings, four of which will be retail and the other two office, the stormwater ponds, and the other infrastructure to support the development. This is an example of the proposed architectural elevations and building renderings provided by the applicant, and I was told they have more to show you. And as previously stated, the applicant has not requested any waivers or modifications to the Land Development Code as part of this rezone. The proposed commercial development will support the surrounding neighborhoods and aligns with the existing and proposed uses along LPGA Boulevard itself. So, with that, staff recommends the planning board forward the rezone of approximately 10.16 acres from Single Family Residential 5 to Plan Development General to the City Commission with the recommendation of approval. A majority vote by the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by City Commission for first reading on December 3rd and for second reading on December 17th. So, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Any questions for staff?
One question real quick.
Please, Pastor.
Traffic pattern, traffic flow, ingress, egress, are there going to be any safety lights there or anything planned for within the development or after or soon after?
That will be determined what improvements they have to do to LPGA Boulevard at site plan. Right now, they're just showing the two access points on the conceptual plan, if we can pull that up.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, right here. So, the actual safety improvements will be determined when they do the full traffic impact analysis for this at-site plan. And LPGA, I believe, is a county road, so it will be up to them.
Right, I know there's a lot of proposed widening and all that stuff.
Extensions and yeah.
Right, but even getting in and out of there now on certain areas is just really, really dangerous.
The applicant may have more information about the LPGA Boulevard connections, so I will let them speak.
It's a county road now. It's in the process of being a DOT road.
So, it'll be up to FDOT if they wait long enough.
Because that's in the works, it's been in the works. They, you know, they're jockeying to see, because the county can't pay for all of this. It's got to be the state, and they're doing a road swap, and so it's in the near, near future.
Can I just add on to what Dana Lee was saying? If you take a look at the plan that's up there right now, on the left side of the plan, that's the north side of the property, you'll see a kind of a stubout for a kind of an access to the north. On the north side of that property is a city-owned property, which is, I think, a potential fire station in the future, and then there'll be the Dunn Extension. So, we wanted them to have that access point there, so anybody on Dunn Avenue could be able to access that without getting onto LPGA Boulevard. So, that was going to help some of the traffic management as well.
Okay, and I was concerned a lot because of the safety of people getting in and out various points on that, on LPGA.
And that'll be looked at when they come in for the site plan, and it'll be a determination of whether they can have a full access or if it'll just be a right-in, right-out access at those locations.
Question before you run off, Dana Lee, if I could, and that, Mr. Robinson, if you had one. Just, could you describe a little bit about these type D buffer shrubs?
Yeah, so the type D buffer is what is required typically between commercial and residential uses, and it is the opaque buffer. So, it usually requires plantings or a wall that will keep it completely screened from the neighboring development. So, what can be allowed in the type D buffer depends on the width. I don't know if the applicant knows how wide it will be.
Well, good timing. Let's bring the applicant up, unless there's any other questions. Mr. Robinson, you were, if you would, just a moment.
Microphone, please.
Microphone, please. Thank you, sir.
No, I was trying to visualize where it is on LPGA.
Yeah, so it is just south of the stadium, so the map that I had of the whole area, oh, right here. So, the one labeled rec, that is the stadium, and then across the street is the private school, I forgot the name of it.
Father Lopez.
Father Lopez, that's the one.
Okay.
Yeah, and then just a little further south, just cut off from this, is where International Speedway Boulevard intersects with it, so it's just outside of the map range.
Wow, okay.
So, it's pretty far down there.
Okay, but when there is a football game, God help us.
Oh, that's already happening, sir.
Yes, yes.
That ship has sailed.
And this Saturday is going to be worse than the last one. I mean, I sat in line for one hour without moving, and I left home an hour early before the game.
The traffic is really bad, isn't it?
It's awful, and I feel sorry for the people that live in that community, because they can't get out.
They might as well just go to the game, they're right there. Just a thought, just a thought. Thank you, thank you. There you go. Applicant, please, name and address for the record, if you would, sir.
Sure. Good afternoon, my name is Dave Glenn. I am the managing partner with First Street Civil Engineering, and our address is 102 South Riverside Drive, New Smyrna Beach, Florida. We have a brief presentation, I think, that will answer some of the questions that you have as far as traffic and what DOT is planning on doing with that roadway in the future. If you don't mind, I can go through that presentation very briefly.
I don't think there's any objections here. Please, if you would, Dave.
Okay. This is just a rendering of what the architect came up with, with potential building facades for the mixed use development. This is an overall map of what DOT is planning to do. As you can see, it's a four-lane divided highway where we get to our property, which is more in the, on the top panel, all the way to the right, is the southern limits of our property, and you can see that there's a full access opening for Royal Country Drive. And then to the north, where the, if you look at the second panel to the left, you can see the stadium parking there, and there's a roundabout that FDOT is proposing there for traffic control and calming. With this scenario, we are most likely looking at right-in, right-out only with U-turns at the roundabouts, just because we don't meet the access separation for any kind of full median opening. This is the proposed cross-section. The top panel shows the two 12-foot lanes going each way, a multi-purpose path that's 14-foot wide on each side of the road. This is our site, the aerial, it's a little bit clearer to see how close we are to, how close we are to US 92, and you can see the stadium and Father Lopez on the aerial as well, and the residential development behind us. This was the future land use map that Dana Lee showed, showing mixed use in this corridor. And then this is the zoning map that shows the SFR 5 next to the PDG zoning. So, our site plan currently shows two access points, and we'll coordinate with DOT to see what we can do in the interim while it's a two-lane road, and also in the future when it's a four-lane road. But we expect that we'll probably be restricted to a right-in, right-out. It's just while it's a two-lane road, the question then becomes where's a safe place to make a U-turn to go south? And then also if a left turn would be allowed to go into the property, I would suspect that it's probably going to be limited to right-in, right-out, just from the proximity of country, the road to the, to the south of us, Rural Country Drive. This was just a table showing the different setbacks and, lanescape buffers, thank you, for the compatibility between residential and the multifamily, I'm sorry, and the mixed use development. So, we're proposing a 10-foot, I believe it's a type 2 buffer, and that type 2 buffer is a 15-foot wide, very intensely planted buffer. That's what we're proposing, because we feel that it'll fill that area with more dense plants, with a range of plants that are shrubs all the way to shade trees. So, at full maturity, you'll have a bigger opaque screening between the two uses for both noise, light, and visual. These are the different buffer types out of your Land Development Code. So, the type D, type 2 buffer is the one that we're proposing. You also have another option with a larger buffer with less plantings, and then you also have a tighter buffer that has a wall and evergreen plants. And these are depictions of each of the buffers, of what a type A, yeah, type A buffer, a type B buffer, and the type C buffer, and type D.
It says at the bottom, D.
I think that's it on this slide, and then if you could cue up the next. Wow, that's where to look.
That may be all she wrote, whether you like it or not, huh?
So, we chose the middle of the road buffer just because we felt that that would give you more of an initial opaqueness at the time of planting. That buffer will grow, but at least it would be something that's more intense, more dense at the startup of the project to start filling in that area now. Okay, so these are the artist's renderings of the project. You can see the retail buildings are in the center with kind of a town center look where you can park on each side of the building. We've, on our site plan, you can see more detail of where we've hidden some of the compactors and looting zones and little courtyard areas, so they are not really visible or produce a lot of noise. We also have some courtyard space in between the buildings where you could have outdoor seating for restaurants or just have a, you know, an open walkway between the buildings, kind of separating it. The office buildings are on the outside of the project, so there are the ones that are facing the stormwater retention ponds. This is just a kind of a cross-section through the project. This is an example of one of the retail buildings. Another section of retail. It's kind of a front view coming in. Kind of a view from LPGA. View internally. And I think he's got some nighttime pictures that are just like the daytime ones. Amazing what you can do with LED lights nowadays.
No doubt.
And I think that's it. We just wanted to share with you what we had so far. You know, having a master plan for a PD is by no means with the detail that's required for site plan review, we'll have to coordinate with various agencies that are in charge of that road at the time of site plan in order to determine the safest access points and safest traffic movements in and out of the project.
Very good. David, you know, in the work that you do, that anytime you're dealing with a commercial use, abutting onto a residential area, there's going to be questions, there's going to be discussions. You went through it in your neighborhood meeting with a lot of questions from residents in that area. In reading the staff report, I noticed that you're talking about a type D buffer.
Yes.
That the shrubs would eventually grow to six feet and be very opaque, which I think is reasonable. The challenge is, it's not going to be six foot on day one, it may be six foot on day, you know, 730, you know, two years from now. My question to you is, would you be willing to look for a solution that would be able to solve those types of issues for the residences on day one, such as an opaque fence perhaps, or something along those lines? So, we're not waiting for those shrubs to mature, we have that shielding from day one.
We had offered our willingness to construct a fence along the back, PVC fence along with the opaque buffering, and the residents, I'm not sure if all of them didn't like it, but we did hear from a few that wanted a concrete wall. We have no objection to going to the concrete wall if that's what the commission wants. You know, with the concrete wall, the buffer is reduced to a five-foot buffer with a wall and evergreen plants, so it's not as intensely planted, and, you know, you have a concrete wall. So, if the residents at the end of the day feel safer with that, with that alternative, we're willing to.
David, how tall is this wall? Was that?
It's a six-foot masonry wall.
Okay, so we're talking the same height as the, what the shrubs would be.
You will actually.
Intently, if you're building the wall, which I would understand.
Right, you'll actually, over time, you know, you've seen landscapes that are planted at day one. You know, you're usually talking about a three-inch caliper shade tree that matures in about two years to a six-inch. You're looking at understory trees like wax myrtles that, you know, look like, look very small at the time of planting, but they do mature pretty quickly. So, I would say, when you're looking at that, it really depends on the time of planting, when the irrigation system is set up, when those plants can go in as compared to construction of the buildings, because that's going to take some time also. So, if you can time it just right, that landscaping might be in place for eight months or so before the buildings are completed, which may give that an opportunity to grow.
Your point's well taken. The challenge is, just all the logistics that you just mentioned have to all fall into place for things to work as perhaps we'd like it to. The wall option, if you build the wall, we're done, we have the hopefully proper shielding for our residents on the other side of your development. So, speaking personally, I certainly don't want to speak for my fellow members here, but I think that should be something we should consider. A wall, I think, makes perhaps a little more sense, but you're telling me you've had some discussions with some that may not be as comfortable with that. Speaking personally, I think that solves the issue day one, and we wouldn't have to concern.
I would agree with you that the wall does solve the issue day one, it's just, is that the most aesthetically pleasing thing to put up between us and the residents? I'm looking at from the resident's side. The wall will be on their side with plants on our side, so it's not going to really be that aesthetically pleasing to the residents. So, it then becomes, you know, a lot of the residents, I think, felt like they were misguided when they bought their home, that that land was conservation and that no one would build there. So, we're very, you know, we're sympathetic to that, because I've heard that story a million times.
David, we realize that isn't your issue.
Right, but we want to do the best we can to restore some kind of visual buffer that's aesthetically pleasing to them as well. So, if they would rather have a wall or the plantings, we're fine going either way.
Okay, my goal here in our discussion back and forth was to, was to, you know, take your temperature.
Yeah.
A willingness, and it sounds like you are, perhaps we can look at some other options and see what makes sense for the collective that are going to be affected.
We'd be happy to.
Can I just make one point on the wall, though?
Please.
If there is a wall and a five-foot buffer, there's vegetation currently existing at that location, right? So, there's some trees over there, some vegetation. Was there a plan to clear out that area or to keep? Because what we would do during the site plan process is encourage you to keep as many existing trees in that buffer as possible. If a wall were to go in, the footers for the wall would damage the trees, and you wouldn't be able to have the trees there, so all those trees would have to come down.
Right.
Instead of keeping them.
I guess the question is, how many trees are there, and is that, is it enough to concern ourselves with removing? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
The concrete would damage a lot of the trees, but the, but the plastic, the PVC vinyl fence might be another option that they might want to consider, because then you wouldn't need to take out the trees. I don't know.
It is less.
Potentially could be more aesthetically pleasing as well.
Yeah.
You have maybe some options as far as color, texture, that type of thing. Any other questions for, please, Mr. Vice Chairman?
It kind of looks like the toe post is a little bit higher on the residential in the back there.
Yes, it is.
You know, that could be, looking at a developer's side of it, that could be beneficial to you. The runoff, it's, you know, the property out there, you know, it's pretty low. I was going to talk to your engineer over there and a couple of things, but that might be beneficial to everybody, because the runoff out there is really extreme. And so, I'll talk to him about that a little bit.
Well, so, as I understand it, the neighborhood to the back was filled, so the lots were filled. I believe that most of the runoff from those lots does go to the front, and they're required to put that in their stormwater ponds. The tie-in slopes that go in their rear yard to the property line, that's offsite flows that we'll have to address and take into our system, but that's not really a large amount of water or something that would really.
I was just looking on the existing plans, looking at the toe posts coming in, because I know it was filled, and, well, I'll talk to your engineer in just a few minutes.
I mean, I am the engineer for the.
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, you're doing a great job of speaking to him now, yes.
Okay, let's talk about the retention ponds.
Okay.
Where's the direct runoff from the retention ponds?
Well, so, in pre-development, the site basically discharges to the right-of-way, and the right-of-way has crosspipes that go to the area across the street to the west.
And I'm assuming that the retention ponds is your borrow pitch where you're going to raise the elevation of the site?
Yes.
Because, you know, as you well know, especially in that area in the wetlands, the digger, the deeper you dig, it doesn't matter, because the water table's high.
Right.
Are you going to have a berm or anything around the retention ponds?
Well, when you fill the site for all of the improvements, you're going to build a berm around the pond, because you have to build up everything in order to get the storage that you need in the retention pond. So, yes, they will be from the water table, wherever that's existing, up to whatever elevation we need to treat the stormwater for the site. Since we're in an open basin, we're limited to the 25-year pre-versus-post rate, and we have to meet the state water quality requirements.
Because since you have a lot of asphalt in there, a lot of parking area and everything, there's not going to be an absorption, a lot of runoff, and I'm surprised, you know, well, I'm not surprised, but with the runoff into the right-of-way, do you think those retention ponds will hold the amount that it's supposed to before the runoff goes into the?
Yes, retention ponds will be adequately sized to handle the pre-versus-post rate.
From the existing water condition, or elevation, I should say.
Yes.
Because it's a lot of air in there, as long as it meets the requirements, because it's always a problem out there.
Yeah, we have two very large ponds, and we know that we're going to have to build Yeah, we have two very large ponds, and we know that we're going to have to build the site up a little bit.
Okay.
Very good. Any other comments? Mr. Robinson, please.
My comment or questions was about the retention ponds. And, you know, there's a neighborhood next to Father Lopez that has some major flooding issues, and also near the stadium too, whenever it rains.
The one in front of the stadium.
Now, you take, you know, you're going to pave over that area where the water goes to, and now, where's all that water's going to go?
Well, that water.
Where it's now, and it's going to go where?
Yeah, so, as I said before, in the pre-development condition, water goes to the right-of-way, and then it finds its way through two cross culverts that go out to the west. That area behind the property to the west is a slough, basically. So that water is a shallow river, for all intents and purposes. That moves water to the north. We are just going to mimic what the pre-development drainage patterns are for post-development. We will size the ponds accordingly, hold the, to attenuate the rainfall amounts for the 25-year event. We will discharge only what's allowed by rule, which is pre-development rate. So we'll run a model to see what the rate is leaving the site. We'll make sure that both ponds discharge less than that rate, and then the ponds will have a bleeder in it for recovery, which will probably go through some sort of treatment system before it discharges out. So we're looking at probably doing some kind of mix of maybe the wetland mats like they have on the residential, and in conjunction with some kind of filtration system, whether it be old and gold, or some other material, something similar to that.
Because the problem that, you know, St. John's, they pretty much control supposedly to let you know, but it never seems to meet quite the standards of the runoff in these low-line areas. The whole area out there, it's saturated, standing water, the runoff is questionable, and especially with whoever starts working on the road and everything, unless they build something that they haven't discussed so far, you're going to have problems.
Well, the only problem I can attest to is what we're going to be designing on our site, so I can tell you that that will meet the state rules. The state water quality rules go into full effect at the end of this year, so that means that you have to show that your site meets pre-development versus post-development, not only rate, but the nutrient levels for phosphorus and nitrogen as well. So you have to go through a treatment train process in cleaning that water. If we have to do something, and let's just say that we end up doing permeable pavers in the parking lot, and have some stormwater retention in the parking spaces using permeable pavers, that will also offset some of that runoff, and that volume contained is volume going back into the groundwater table and not being discharged. So there are a variety of different things that we can look at doing in order to meet that state rule. So we have a lot of different options, we just haven't gotten there yet.
Got there, yeah.
That's a final engineering problem, and actually, we just haven't been contracted to go that far in the job yet.
So, David, let me make sure I understand, not being the heavy engineering expertise that someone at this table does, the, are we saying that the runoff off your project will not affect either the Father Lopez or the Daytona Stadium retention ponds at all? Can we say that tonight with some semblance of certainty?
I don't see how it would affect their retention ponds, since we're not discharging to their retention ponds.
That's my thought.
And, you know, we're downstream, I believe, of their retention system, so it's pretty sure you can't push water upstream, so.
I was going to say, oh, that'd be a trick.
Yeah, would be. I think there are a few places.
I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions for David? One more, Mr. Robinson, please.
In a few years, when they four-lane LPGA, they're going to be having more asphalt to take the space, or the place of the, where the water would go, you know, into the ground, and are they going to build the road up? So how's that going to affect the flooding in your retail?
I'm not DOT, so I don't know how high they're going to build the road, and if they're going to change the elevation at all. We have a road out there right now. It would be reasonable to assume that they're going to build the road at the same elevation as the road that they have out there, if they're just in fact going to add two lanes on the other side. Because two lanes that are existing are already on one side of the right-of-way, so they could in fact just build two more lanes on the other side. However, if they do raise the road, they still have to provide those connections that are existing for water to move to the west. So those connections will remain, no matter what, because they are there now and they're relied upon by all of the projects that discharge stormwater to that right-of-way. DOT will be responsible for designing and maintaining their own stormwater collection system, stormwater treatment system, and that will really be up to them and how they decide to pursue that design.
But, okay, so your retail, or your development?
Yes, sir.
Is on the side of the stadium?
Yes.
And if, where would they build the road so as not to affect the flooding?
Well, there's two cross pipes underneath the road that will remain, so we'll be able to still use those cross pipes to go from the east side of the road to the west side of the road and go into that one.
And DOT still has to meet their stormwater requirements, so they'll probably be installing ponds to be able to meet those requirements in addition to the roadway, so they have to meet those requirements as well.
I just feel for the residents who's out there now suffering with the flooding in the school. I know here comes someone here, you know, to take away that area again.
Well, Mr. Robinson, it's why I asked the question about the two retention ponds. Was this runoff going to have any direct impact? And because it's close, but not close enough where it's going to affect either of those ponds, because you were absolutely right, I lived down there myself, it can be challenging, and we do not need another ounce of water there, let alone anything else. So that was, hopefully, the point that was made.
I believe we're downstream of those ponds, we're at a low elevation, so we're closer to where those cross pipes are, so we shouldn't be affecting anybody's drainage along that's on either side of us. I believe we're at a lower part of the.
Very good. David, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, yes, sir. All right, we have one speaker, Mr. Hykes. Always good to have you here, haven't seen you in a while. How you been? I'm sure you can explain everything and solve all this issue for us.
Not really, not really.
Name and address.
I'm a broker, I'm not an engineer.
Name and address, Kevin.
Kevin Hykes, 1266 Burgundy Court, Oviedo, and I also own a piece of land directly close to this gentleman. Just seeing that, I think the project's going to be good for the area, because, you know, I'm planning on putting a lot of residential on my side, and of course, it'd be nice and close to go over there and get with the shop a little bit and get that retail, which is, although it's a mid-block, you drive north of there, and that traffic up there and all that retail up there is very, very crazy. It's, I was just up there today, and on the right side there, it's, you can't even get out and go left, so you got to go out and go north, right into the lights and the traffic and the buggies, so it'll be good to have some mid-block, I think, retail there. So, and I don't know when I'll be coming in, I have, still waiting in the apartment. Business right now is soft, I'm considering changing to single-family, or I'd even add some commercial to mine too, because I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think it's, being a former commissioner, it's better tax base, and, you know, rather than just making, putting pressure on the city's services through the tax base, a couple of jobs actually helps out, so.
Well, let me ask you, Commissioner, a question then. What's your take on walls, fences, shrubs? How do you feel about one as opposed to the other?
I mean, I think, of course, the block walls in the front look very nice, but where he is around the back, you know, if they were expecting it to stay natural, that could be a problem. So it's really, I usually lean on what the residents want. I mean, when I sat in your chair, I was a P and Z too when I was in Sanford, and I always defer to the residents, I mean, as long as it's not, as long as it's within code and it's reasonable, because they're the ones that really have to live there and look at it. So you want to take care of your residents in those ways, but if it knocks down a lot of trees, that was a great point, I mean, you got to point that out to them, they may not be thinking that way. So, and the other issue is that the water is a problem. I mean, that hurricane came through last year, and I had two feet of water on my property. And even the, the pipes that go under, that cross to the street, they dump into my land. I'm not a wetland. I mean, behind me is the wetlands, but it has caused a lot of problems for me, because even though everybody technically is maintaining their water on their own site, so to speak, because that's what you have to do by law, you can't push water onto somebody else's site by law, but there's been so much development in that quadrant, that you've got a lot of water going into those canals upstream, coming down into that wetland, spreading out and it's pushing back up on my property, and the same thing, the, you know, you get a rain or something like that, there's a lot more water coming down my way. I'm probably going to be the last development. Everything around me is wetlands, owned by St. John's Water Management, I guess. I'm the last developer there, so I've already got big water problems, and I'm not really sure I'm going to, how I'm going to, St. John's Water Management's going to beat me up when I go in. It is what it is.
It is what it is. Well, thank you. Thank you, Kevin, appreciate your time, sir. All right, moving forward, like a motion, please, for item 4A.
Can I make a motion that we approve Plan Development and Generals Resonant DV 2024-584. The common's at LPGA PD.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 4B. Madam Secretary, if you would.
Item 4B, George W. Ingram Boulevard, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, DV 2025-511, Legislative Hearing.
Very good. Moving on, staff. Hey Doug, how are you?
Hey, long time no see.
Yes, sir.
Doug of Chivers, under with the city. This is a request by our department to, for a small-scale comp plan amendment, change the future land use map designation to Level 2, the commercial transition for six properties totaling 0.66 acres. Initially, it was one property. We looked around, we realized that the other properties would benefit from map amendment.
Okay, so one became six, huh?
Yeah. We do this occasionally, you know, case-by-case basis, we see something that needs to be fixed.
Sure.
And the one was a property owner came in to develop their property, and they would have to change their land use, and that's why we looked at this, and we said, you know what, it's more than just this one property, it needs to be changed, so we were going to take it on and do the change for the, all of the properties.
Excellent.
So located on George Ingram, some of the properties are developed. This is the current future land use and the proposed future land use. This is the current zoning, which it will be consistent. So we're proposing amendment of future land use from Level 2, commercial transition, bring the current zoning and the uses into compliance with the comp plan. Historically, these parcels have been developed as residential, office, and commercial uses under the RDM 5 zoning category, and that's incompatible with the Level 2 designation. So staff's been unable to find out when land use was changed.
But it did, that's all we know, right?
We come across these every once in a while. So all these things will increase technically, theoretically, will increase the water, sewer, and traffic. Again, most of these parcels are already developed, it's just, you know, when you, basically, you're doubling the density, it'll increase these things. So staff finds this small-scale amendment is consistent with the comp plan, doesn't represent urban sprawl, city has capacity to serve the demand on available water and sewer, and staff recommends approval of the proposed future land use map amendment from Level 2, the commercial transition. Majority voter, planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval of the city commission. And this item is scheduled to be heard by city commission on December 3rd, first hearing, and the second reading at December 17th. And that's my presentation.
That wraps it up. Thank you, thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? See, none, and since staff is the applicant, we'll move straight forward to speakers. We don't have any, so I will run right into asking for a motion for item 4B, please.
Can I make a motion that we approve? Small-scale comprehensive plan DV 2025-511, Legislative, SS CPA, George W. Ingram Boulevard, FALUAM attachment.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Moving smartly forward to item 4C. Madam Secretary, please.
Item 4C, Terms and Uses, LDC Text Amendment, DV 2025-577, Legislative Hearing.
Very good. I believe this is going to be your baby, Doug, is that right?
It's staff again, yeah. Dennis Moll, Planning Director.
You're rolling.
Yeah. This is a request by the Growth Management and Planning Department, Planning Division, to amend Section 11.5, Terms and Uses Defined of the Land Development Code to Add a Definition for Social Service Uses and to Modify Definitions for General Industrial Services and Vending Machines. The first one, the proposal to add a definition, back in 2012, the city commission approved an amendment to the comprehensive plan that addressed social services in the city. It required all new social services to go through a semi-public use permit or a public use permit to allow the use at a location. It gave the city commission a case-by-case opportunity to review the use, to determine if it was appropriate for the location. One thing we didn't do in 2012 is include a definition for exactly what social service uses are. We do get questions, you've seen, come before this board, we've had a number of semi-public use permits come through for social service uses to go through that process, but we wanted to include in our land development code a definition for social service uses, just to be very clear what it was that we were talking about. So for the proposed definition, social service uses, uses that provide services such as financial assistance, food, clothing, shelter, medical care, counseling, and referrals to low-income homeless or unemployed population at no or reduced fees or similar services. This is a definition that the staff has been using to determine social service uses. We thought it was important that we get into our land development code so everybody can see exactly what we're using for that determination. So the next modification we have is actually to an existing definition for general industrial services. This kind of started, probably about six months ago, we had a telephone call about data centers and where data centers can go in the city. We don't have a data, it's a relatively new use, a data center is a, really, it's a warehouse building that has electronic equipment in it that stores data for electronic services. It's a low-impact use, it occurs all inside a building, really works as kind of a warehouse use. So staff had made a determination when it came in, and the land development code allows us to do this, when we have a use that's not technically in our land development code, we look at the most comparable use. And we made a determination that the most comparable use was the general industrial services, and so that's what we went with. After a discussion a little bit more, we said, you know what, maybe we should put this in the land development code. We're not expecting a bunch of data centers to come in. If we were, or if that were to be the case, we will amend the land development code to specifically put data centers in as a use in the zoning districts, but we don't really see that happening, so what we wanted to do is just modify the existing definition for the general industrial services. We added a sentence to that to say that this use also includes data centers, housing servers, storage systems, network equipment, and similar operations. They still have to meet all code requirements for that general industrial use, but it fits in with that use category. The next one, we had, excuse me, we had come to the planning department, somebody, and I have in your staff report, and I probably should have had the picture up there, this big ice machine, and this is not uncommon, we see this in a lot of different communities, this large ice machine, and a lot of people have them close to, you know, where they go fishing, or the beach, or things like that. Also great for, you know... fishing or the beach or things like that. Also great for, you know, after a hurricane, if they can get the power up and running to be able to provide ice to people in a community. So but this is a, you know, if you take a look at what this is, this is it's it's not coin operated, but it'd be cash operated or point of sale. And it's unattended. Well, our land development code definition would call it a vending machine, which means that's accessory to a principal use, which means it couldn't sit alone by itself. And that's what their intent was, to sit this alone by itself. We will. So we made the determination that this is a retail use, this large ice facility, which means when they do come in and they want to go on a piece of property, they've got to meet landscape requirements, parking requirements, signage requirements, just like any other retail use would have to do. But they can operate over there. But they won't be operating with a with an attendant. It'll be it'll be a unattended facility. So we've modified the definition of the vending machine. I brought it up to date because vending machines really aren't coin operated anymore. There's nothing you can get for a coin. So sometimes you can put cash in and sometimes you put your phone up, you put a card up. So we changed it to a cash or multi-payment point-of-sale system, which disperses a product without an attendant and is accessory to a principal use because we're still want to make sure we keep those vending machines as the accessory use for some of these principal uses. So those were the three changes that we have proposed. So staff does recommend approval of this request. Of course, we would to amend section 11.5 of the land development code to add a definition for social service uses and modify definitions for general industrial services and vending machines. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the city commission. And this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on December 3rd and second reading on December 17th. And that concludes the presentation.
Very good. When you look at you look at this large standalone ice machine, a lot of things I can think of what it would be. Vending machine is not one of them, that's for sure.
And you know, when you take a look at that picture, there's a lot of signage on it. That's not something we would permit.
Yeah, that's.
Right.
There's only so much signage they could have, and it's based in the land development code for that zoning district. And if, you know, if it's, you know, 30 square feet or whatever it might be based on the building, that's what they would get. And that's all.
Let me ask you something with that. Any kind of vending machine in that area?
I'm sorry?
Any kind of vending machine in that area?
Is there any kind of vending machine?
I mean, you know, if I want to.
Could they put any?
I want to put a soda dispenser there.
Well, you could put a soda dispenser there, but you're going to have to provide parking for your soda dispenser, you know, landscaping, lighting, all stormwater, all of that stuff has to go in.
Because see with your ice machine, it doesn't show any of that. I mean.
No, no, this doesn't. But if they were to come in, we would consider them a retail use.
Retail.
You know, in the future, let's say we see all of these coffee shops popping up. What happens if one day there's a unattended coffee shop where you can pull up and, you know, put your card in there?
That's coming.
You know what? They're going to have to meet all code requirements and meet, you know, landscaping, stormwater, signage, and all of that. So this would, you know, that ice machine, it's big, but they'd have to meet all code requirements when they do come in.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Robinson?
Yes. My concern, or my my thought, is that is this referring just social services to the lower socioeconomic folks? Couldn't there be social service uses for just anybody? And why do you need to put low income?
Typically, that is where the social services are concentrated. That's what the social service, the point of the social service is, is to help that the low-income homeless or unemployed population. If there's a service that is helping somebody who is none of these, typically, they would be charging a service for that. And so they wouldn't be doing it free of charge. So it wouldn't be a social service. It would be a business operation. And our business operations are controlled by our land development code where they can where they can occur. All this does is really defines, it doesn't change the process for how we do things. It's the same definition that we've actually been using as staff. But it's, you know, people still, social services still have the opportunity, just like they've done before, to go through the process and go to the city commission to ask for the ability to have the use.
Well, say, for example, the medical care, and they charge a co-pay, would they become a business then?
Typically not. If somebody is charging, it's typically not a social service at that point. If it's a profitable business that they're.
But it's going to be a nonprofit.
Yeah, well.
Well, so maybe when you're looking at this, it seems a little bit discriminatory. And maybe, you know, maybe a nonprofit or one that doesn't.
Well, you know, maybe we should talk about how this all kind of came about with the city commission and the city commission approving the comp plan amendment for the social service uses and the process. There was a long study that we have done. This was back right when I got here, 2009, 2010. And it was determined that, I think, and I don't have the exact number, but that 63% of the social services within Volusia and Flagler County were concentrated in the city of Daytona Beach.
Yes.
And the city commission said, you know what, we see a need for social services. We don't know if we need to be the hub for all social services. So we want to make sure that if there's any new social services coming in, we determine, is this use already being served in the community? Do we already have this? And is there an opportunity to have this used someplace else that would be best served? And those questions are asked, and the city commission makes that decision. And it's up to them whether or not they want to allow the social service use to come into the to the city. We've had a number of applications come forward. I can't think of any that came forward that were denied by the city commission for the social service use. So that's what we have. That's the process we have that's in place, that was put in place by the city commission. This just helps us, helps staff, helps the residents who want to take a look at the definition to know what it was that we're talking about.
And let's keep in mind, each and every social service facility, they're going to have their own standards for what they consider low-income homeless, unemployed. So it's not going to be a line that the city's drawing. It's going to be what that social service entity brings to the brings to the, you know, the fore. And the idea being that whatever they see their services as and what they want to market it towards, that's what they'll do. And that could be different from facility to facility. Anything else, sir? Anything else for Dennis? All right. Seeing seeing none. Like if I could, a motion for item 4C, please.
I make a motion, we approve item number 4C, terms and uses, LDC text amendment, DV 2025-577.
Well done. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4D. Madam Secretary, if you would.
Item number 4D.
D, yes.
Historic Preservation Board Land Amendment Code text amendment, DV 2025-576 legislative hearing.
Thank you. Doug, you're back. Please.
This is a request, again, by my staff on behalf of Historic Preservation Board to amend section 2.4 of the Historic Preservation Board membership appointments in terms of office, to reduce the membership from nine members to seven. The reason we're doing this is because we have, I'm the liaison for the Historic Preservation Board. We're having difficulty keeping nine members. And it affects the quorum requirement as well. And there, you know, a meeting or two that we didn't have the quorum when we could not vote or approve something. I spoke to the state Historic Preservation Office regarding our certification as a certified local government, because that would impact us. They said we could actually go down to five members, you know, if we wanted to. So after consulting with the Historic Preservation Board, we agreed to seven members, which is consistent with the rest of the boards. In fact, I think this is the only board that had nine members. I think one of the main reasons we're having a difficult time keeping members is you all have to do your financial disclosure, and so do I, the member of Volusia Water Management Commission. It scares some people. We had one board member start, he was there about a month. He had to do the Form 1.
And it just.
I resigned. We still have to do it, though. But anyway, I think that was the main reason. So this is just basically reducing nine to seven. Though if you look at the second one, it says two members nominated by the mayor, that actually comes to eight. That's how we came up to nine. Anyway, we fixed that. Also, our CLG requirement requires that we meet four times a year. So I wanted to include that in the section 2H, 2.4, 2. H. And then the quorum will be four rather than five. And so staff recommends approval. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to include something to this.
I was about to ask you. I think you have a couple amendments you want to include. 4D, sir.
It's in your folder. I have to consulting with legal. But my want to include for the planning board and Board of Appeals, language that would, in the event the board member moves, as long as he's still within the city, or redistricting takes that board member out, that they can continue their term, you know, if that happens. Again, it's up to the new city commissioner to, you know, keep that or not, but at least it won't be displaced. They can continue their term. And so the language and everything is in your folder. And then staff recommends approval to request amending 2.4, 2.2, and 2.5. The majority vote, the planning board members present voting is required to recommend approval to city commission. And it's anticipated to be heard by city commission first reading December 3rd, second reading on December 17th.
Very good, sir. Any questions for Doug?
Well, I think that the city in general is having a hard time keeping members on boards, or at least having a quorum.
That's the truth.
So I think it's something good to reduce the amount. I think it's a good idea.
Now, we have to raise the pay.
Yeah, let them raise the pay.
Pass, sir. I think we double it. I think we double it. What's two times zero? I'm not big on math. We have to get the get our turn involved with that one. Anything else for Doug? Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, fellow members for 4D, I would ask if you would include the two additional LDC text amendments, so we make sure we bring that in with that item. So if the motion maker would take that into consideration, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, so ready for motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Go ahead. Go for it.
I'm freezing.
Let's move this along.
I make a motion, we approve item number 4D, Historic Preservation Board Land Development Code Amendment, text amendment, DV.
You're fine.
DV 2025-576 legislative hearing.
And including?
And including additional LDC text amendments to item 4D.
Perfect. Perfect.
I'll say.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Moving forward to item number five, other business. Anything from the downtown redevelopment board, from anyone? All right, very good. Thank you. Midtown? How about, how about Beachside? Couple things on affordable housing. We just had our last meeting yesterday. We discussed the annual strategies and recommendations for what is called the incentive review and recommendation report. And what that is, is coming up with ideas and concepts and to codify that into the land development code. And there's a number of them, but I wanted just to give you an idea of some of the things that we were talking about yesterday, like expedited affordable housing projects, moving those forward to get those done. So when we have those opportunities, we take advantage of them. Waivers for affordable housing projects. We have that codified into the land development code as well. And also affordable rental units. Sometimes we just think about homeownership. There's also opportunities to get, you know, competitively priced rental units for folks that are in that situation. So those are just some of the ideas we're looking at. Our next meeting's in November. We're going to be tightening that up. And then the city commission will be considering whatever recommendations will be made on in their, I believe it'll be their December 3rd for first reading and 17th for second reading. So just so you folks are aware. Next is public comment. John, I know you're sitting back there and you're dying to talk to us, so come on up. Give us three minutes or less of what of what you're speaking of, sir. Did you know the routine?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think you got it.
Jonathan, Daytona Beach night. First, Dennis, I hate to disagree with you with regard to the denial of social services. Yes, we did, right? St. Paul, well, that's where the Catholic Church wanted to move from White Street to St. Paul's, right next to St. Paul's, because the college wanted that land for dormitories. So they said, okay, well, we have land on Ridgewood, we'll move to Ridgewood, right? There was a big brew out, and the public did not want any more Catholics in the area. So the city commission turned it down. So they did turn down one social service.
When did that happen?
Ten years.
After 2012, with the the comp plan amendment for social service uses going through that process for the semi-public.
Whenever it is, Charlie was on the commission.
Before. I was just referring to the comp plan requirement.
Okay, gotcha. And we were going through rezoning. And during the rezoning, I made a comment about the development west of 95. And as you know, Stacy and the mayor doesn't think there's a lot of development west of 95. The mayor actually doesn't think there has been any development west of 95. So she made a comment at the meeting that there was no more land left to develop west of 95, and her zone was completely developed. All right. So before I say something at the next meeting, I want to make absolutely sure, because the mayor says I'm never correct. So I want to make absolutely sure that you all believe that there to be land to be developed west of 95, and that you have had people come in for development in the past. They're still going to develop, and they will develop west of 95.
I believe today's meeting would be evidence of such.
Mm-hmm. Just saying. She doesn't believe, she said it publicly. Secondly, affordable housing. I asked, because I think I spoke last time about what was happening at Clyde Morris Landing. So I asked affordable housing, what do they consider affordable housing? I've asked the midtown CRA, I've asked the county, would they consider affordable housing? Because they gave $1.8 million towards Clyde Morris Landing. We gave 1.8 million towards Clyde Morris Landing. So what, because it comes up all the time. People say, will this be affordable housing? It has been mentioned several times at this meeting. So what do you all consider affordable housing? Because I don't, it's been said that there's supposed to be police fire school teachers. We're not getting that at Clyde Morris Landing. Lastly, the mayor and I had a little disagreement. Again, it's like we do it all the time. There are five senior housing along the corridor between Beach Street and Main Street, I mean, Beach Street and Ridgewood. You've got two public housing, Windsor and the Mailie. You've got a Episcopal housing on Ridgewood. You've got Catholic housing on Ridgewood, next to St. Paul's. You've got a Baptist housing at Fairview. And now there's another Cedar Center coming back, Madison and B Street. And the mayor said, that's fine. We'd like to have more of it. All right. From what I understand about CRAs, the whole idea is to lift the area, to bring in money, right? If you're going to be in senior housing, affordable low-cost housing, they're not going to have the funds to do that. So I don't know if you have the option of talking about whether we want more or encouraging more senior housing in downtown. My suggestion is we don't. in downtown. My suggestion is we don't encourage more senior housing in downtown, because there is land right next to Windsor and the Mailey. I would hate to see that go to additional affordable housing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any comments from staff?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a couple comments of what John said, just to correct something. The Madison Oaks is not located in a redevelopment area. It's outside, it's north of the redevelopment area. So that's the, it's on Madison, it's on Beach Street. It's in a proposed senior affordable housing. It's outside a redevelopment area. The other thing is, the comment that the city commission was making about nothing available on the west side of 95, they did not say that. We talked about, and I got up and I had to speak on this, the question was, do we have any large-scale developments, large-scale areas left to be developed? And we talked about Avalon, that was a potential, and that's, they know about that. But the, but Minto had come in and the LPGA, there's a couple of smaller pieces here and there. And that's what, that's what I told them. We do have development, just like what we saw tonight. You got little pockets of development that can occur in different places. So that was the comment, that there's no large-scale developments, but there is still development available on the west side of 95. So that's what the comment was from the city commission. I just wanted to correct that.
With that, any comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may. It's right on time. Board member comments fitting in perfectly.
Well, while you're updating definitions, right, for the LDC, maybe you could put a proposed definition for affordable housing, so we can know what affordable housing?
We have in our land development code definition for affordable housing.
Does it include an income amount or...
Yeah, there's a formula. I'll tell you what I'll do, is I'll, at the next meeting, I'll bring the information on affordable housing, and I'll pass it out to you. We'll put it in your package so they can have it.
And the senior housing, too?
Yeah.
Section 622, I believe.
Yes, I think it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? With that...
We're done.
We're adjourned. Thank you for your time.